Good morning, everybody. Thanks so much for joining us this morning. It is 10 o'clock in the morning and the chair will call the Lone Star College Board of Trustees Budget Board Meeting to order. I would go ahead and take a roll call just to make sure that we do have a quorum today or this morning. And I'll start with, I believe trustee Stoma would not be attending this morning. But let's see, trustee Kane, are you here?
I'm here.
Trustee Pierce?
Here.
Trustee Ayers Wilson?
Present.
Right, trustee Sullivan? I think he's here. Trustee Good?
Here.
Trustee vote? Trustee Maria?
Not present.
Hi, Pierre. Who would like to lead the Pledge of Allegiance this morning?
I'd be happy to, Madam Chair.
Yes, trustee Kane, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Dr. Head, do we have the proper meeting posted?
Yes, I certify it was posted in accordance with the law.
Okay. Desiree? I hope I'm saying your name correctly.
Yes, you are.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm sorry about that. Do we have any public comments today this morning?
We do not have anyone for public comment today.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Let's move on to special reports and announcements. We do have a special announcement this morning. Trustee Linda Good, you have the floor, ma'am.
Thank you very much. I appreciate this and I'll keep it very brief. First, I want to state that the past 11 years that I have served on the board has been the one of the most significant experiences I've ever had. It has been my pleasure and my honor to serve our community, to serve this college as a member of the Board of Trustees. Sadly, earlier this year, I received a rather unsettling medical diagnosis that spurred me to evaluate how I want to use the time that I have remaining. As a result, my husband and I put our home on the market with no idea of how quickly it would sell or how fast the closing would approach. As it turns out, our house was on the market for only eight days and the closing is scheduled for next Wednesday. That means that as of next Thursday, I will no longer have an address in the district that I serve. And therefore, assuming that the closing goes forward as planned, I will be forced to resign effective July 1st. I thank you all for the tremendous honor of participating with our community in this capacity. And I wish you all the very best going forward. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, trustee Good. Hello, Alex, would you like to add any comments into that?
Madam Chair, I would.
Yes, sir.
Linda, I've only known you for a very short period of time. But during that period of time, I have come to have the greatest respect for you professionally and the greatest admiration for you personally. I'm very sorry to hear about this news with regard to your health. And of course, very sorry to know that you will be leaving the Board of Trustees. Please know that my sincere thoughts will be with you and your husband as you look to the future. But thank you for your service to the Board of Trustees. And thank you for all that you have done for Lone Star, for the Lone Star system.
Thank you, trustee Kane. I appreciate that. You have no idea how much. Any further comments? I do have one, trustee Good. You will be dearly missed. You, you know, your tenacity would be greatly missed. Your due diligence and doing your work and getting ready for our meetings. And obviously, your objectivity and your subjectivity in terms of the decisions that you make will be dearly missed. And so I think I came, right, I think I came to this particular, to Lone Star when you were, I think it was your second or third term. I don't, I don't remember. But, you know, you were a good, a good teacher, trustee Good, and so you will be dearly missed. But I know that you're going to have a good time off. And I really hope that you have, you know, very, very good health. So just keep us posted on that.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Madam Chair, could I tell you one thing, please?
Yes.
So trustee Good was chair the first couple of years. I became the chancellor. And she and I have talked about this during her tenure. We had more reforms. We basically overhauled the, our policies and procedures, I think, to make them more employee-friendly to, for a lot of clarity. And we worked with her and Mario Castillo and a number of board members to, I think, address a lot of the gaps that we had in the, in the policies. And so we also traveled to different places and we were very active in Washington and actually on some international visits or an international visit. And so I think very highly of trustee Good. She's going to be missed and she, I, there are a lot of things that we worked on together that, that I think have led us to the place where we are right now. And, and it put us in good shape. But it was a major reform period that we went through a couple of years, actually. So, and I personally, I know I'm going to miss her and I appreciate what she's done, so.
Thank you, Chancellor Head. I appreciate that very much.
Before we move forward to the next item in the agenda, I just want to let everyone know that we're going to be sending communication out either sometime today or maybe early tomorrow about our board policy for replacement for a board of trustee. So be in the lookout for that, okay? All right. Let's see, what's the next? Next item is review or the budget board. So yes.
Okay. So let me just give a little, a little background over this. And this is really for some of the new trustees, but and I, I should have sent a message out earlier than what I did. I know I talked to a couple of you, but so what happens in this process, and keep in mind that everything's been moved because of COVID. Remember that we normally would have a review in February, the initial review, and then we would be working on the budget. And because we didn't really meet until May to talk about this, and this is kind of an updated version of what occurred in May. So this is just a budget review. So what you're going to hear today is our general categories and what we're proposing based on that May meeting. And we were able to go back since that May meeting, we firmed up some of our, our numbers. And, you know, we had a couple of different issues going on at the time. We were trying to firm up assessed value. We were trying to firm up what was going on with the state. And now we're looking at our enrollment numbers and our enrollment numbers are looking healthy. We're up 20, almost 25% over this time last year. So we continue to monitor that very carefully. So what you're going to see today is an outline. And Jennifer Mott is going to be doing most of the talking after we get into the presentation. But what we do is we get general direction from you at this meeting and then we'll be working to put the actual numbers in the budget. Now, we've been working on the budget, but we have almost a $500 million budget with expenditures this year that's coming here. That includes operating and our debt payment and construction projects. So it is a huge undertaking. And so it takes, it takes us about, after we get today, until late part of July, we'll be, I say we, the staff will be working on putting all the numbers in the budget so that we can get that to you so that you can review that. Jennifer will have the timetable over that. So this is, the schedule is a little off right now thanks to COVID, but I think we're in really good shape. And you're going to see, the one thing I wanted to point out is that I've talked to a number of you about this. We are, what you're going to see in our budget is a couple of things. One is we're trying to restore some of the reductions and non-expenditures that we had last year, or the previous year. And keep in mind that we, we froze budgets. We didn't have compensation increases. We, I mean, this time last year, we were in the middle of COVID and looking at a 30 or 35% decline, maybe we thought. We were just preparing for anything. So we're trying to restore some of the, like a combination of the cuts and freezes. And some of what you're seeing today is things that we already had planned before COVID came in last year. And what we're trying to do basically is provide more services for students. And you're going to see that in the budget. I know some of this we talked about recently, but you're going to see some, some of the projects that we're working on that what we're seeing is we can have all the enrollment increases that we want to, but to keep the students, we have to have more help for them and what we call wraparound services. And that's, you're going to see that reflected in the budget today, a more individualized attention. So with that, let's, we can get into the, to the actual presentation. And I'm going to have the first four or five slides and then Jennifer Mott will take over. Next slide.
Okay.
Jennifer, you have control of the presentation.
Oh, go ahead. Sorry, Jennifer.
All right, thank you. Let me switch to sharing my screen.
So this is a non-voting, I mean, all we're doing today is just talking about this. There's no, there's no vote or that occurs and you'll approve this in August, the final budget.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm just getting all the screens set up so everyone is seeing presentation right now, right? Okay.
So just a quick overview. And again, I'm going to spend a couple of minutes on this. I just want to re-emphasize how large we are. And what we think right now is that as we come out of COVID, we're going to continue to grow. The market is there. We know how many students are coming out of high school and how many are in the fourth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, ninth grade. So we know that we've got students coming to us and it's all kind of students and then return other people coming back to get an education. So just this is just an overview of the system. You might look at the end down there, the 9,500 sections. We are a huge system, 9,500 sections that we offer each fall. And we'll be increasing that as students start coming back. Next slide. I want to point out to you that what we, is continuing changes in demographics and we're still waiting on the census and we're not going to have that until maybe September. I'm not sure. That's the federal government. What's happening, though, is that the Hispanic population continues to grow roughly a percentage point every year. The white or Anglo population is decreasing about a percentage point every year and the black population is holding pretty steady. Now, it really, you have to add a couple of other numbers in here because of the other. And so those are usually, it's a combination of if students are not identifying themselves, but I think blacks are about 15, maybe 16%, and then Hispanics are a percentage point or so above that. So. Excellent. This is our growth. This is, we show this slide every time and we try to update it, but so the red area is where the growth is. And the pink area is where it's not as significant as would be. You might notice that, I mean, some concerns that we have is we take a look at this. If you take a look down really inside Beltway 8 and around the south of 1960, you see some of the pink areas. And we're going to be focused on that to get these students in school. And we know they're there. The question is, what are we, what are we doing for outreach? And that has to do with, I think, the services that we offer. It has to do with financial aid and making sure that they know about that. And we're not going to be talking about stimulus and COVID money, but that's really for us over the long term, it's about the outreach that we have in those communities. And Houston North has a lot of this and so does North Harris, but that's an area that we need to focus on right there. Next slide. So when we think about the budget, this is what we do. We put them in these general categories. And this has been our strategic plan ever since I became the chancellor. And I, if you haven't heard this story before, the strategic plan really came from our own employees as we went through the process of a chancellor selection. These were the themes and the, the, these were the themes that kept coming up from all employees that, you know, our number one focus is student success and always going to be that. And but the academic workforce and the responsibility and then the culture and the partnerships that we have. So when we do the budget, you're going to see them put in these different categories. And that makes it easier for us. Now, we have individuals, you know, we're going through SACS accreditation, the Southern Association accreditation. So we have a book that you'll be receiving that's 300 pages long where we have this plan and then we have multiple pieces to it. But the way we think about it from the system level is these broad categories. And that's really what you're seeing today is broad categories of the budget. And then that's implemented down at all the various locations that we have. So. Next slide. Okay, so I'm going to turn this over to Jennifer Mott.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you. Yeah, first, just sort of precursor before I really get into the details of how we're building the proposed budget. Of course, I want to mention, you know, a huge thank you to the entire finance team, both in my system, but throughout the whole college, right, even at the campuses, everyone put so much work into building these budgets. And it's only because of all that collaboration that we've been able to get, right, the Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement. We've gotten that for 15 consecutive years. The recent, more recent one is we got the Government Treasurers Organization of Texas Award for our investment policy in 2019. So we do plan on applying for that again because it's a two-year award. And then do also want to mention about the pricing that we did yesterday. The board had approved for us to issue the last tranche of bonds for the voter-approved 485 million back in 2014. We had 185 million left that had not yet been issued. So we issued that yesterday. We also did a refinancing at the same time since we were in the market. So I'm very thankful to my team and everyone who put so much work into this. We did from Standard and Poor's, they reaffirmed our AAA rating on our general obligation, which is the tax-backed bonds. And that's what we used, did the issuance of the 185 million for. And we got an interest rate of 2.18%, which is great. I wrote down the prior issuances. In 2015, we got 3.26% and in 2017, 3.66%. And at the time, I remember thinking then, like, how amazing, great, low interest rate that was. And here we are getting 2.2%. So that went well yesterday. And then for refinancing as well, S&amp;P also on the revenue bonds affirmed our AA rating. That is the same rating we had had previously. Since it's just a different revenue source, you're not pledging taxes, you're pledging revenues. That is going to come with a lower rating, but so the AA is what is unchanged from where we were. So that was good to still have that AA rating. And we were able to refinance a lot of the revenue debt. We were currently paying a coupon of 4.9% on that debt and we refinanced this yesterday at 2.35%. So over the life of this debt, that will save 13.6 million. So just very happy to, to report that, that occurred yesterday, excuse me. So next, before, like I said, before I really get into the budget, I always like to show Lone Star College in comparison with the other 49 community colleges in Texas just so we, we can then view the proposed budget in the context of where we stand as a college. So first, looking at our taxable value, and I say this all the time, how lucky we are. We have a really strong tax base. And that was even noted by S&amp;P as part of that AAA rating is the strength of our tax base. So you can see here of the 50 community colleges, we are the fourth highest in our taxable value. And this, of course, then sort of naturally translates into tax revenues. On an aggregate basis, we are the fifth highest in the amount of tax revenues that are collected among the 50 community colleges. And then on the flip, sort of flip side of that coin, the calculation is our tax rate. Because we have a healthy tax base, we can have, we can be the fifth highest in tax revenues and still have the 10th lowest tax rate. So this shows that we still continue to be good on the tax rate being low. Next is showing where we stand in terms of tuition and fees. This is our in-district. We are the 16th lowest for the in-district tuition and fees. This was Fall 2020. And then this shows, so out of district, we are the third highest. And that has been a policy decision of the board, right? Saying that we do not want our local taxpayers to be subsidizing out-of-district students. Well, part of what happens is since we do have a strong tax base and high tax revenues, then that means that this is where the calculation of out-of-district falls in order to make sure local taxpayers are not subsidizing these out-of-district students. And in a similar fashion for out-of-state, that same calculation influences the out-of-state tuition fees, how we set that. And this shows that picture, right, our percentage of tax revenues, so 42% of our tax revenues, and this is fiscal year '20. So this data, just to have the comparison data, is about a year behind. 42% of our revenues come from tax revenues. And you can see that that is, it's certainly not the highest, but it is above the median. So that again, that is part of what influences that out-of-district, out-of-state calculation so that the local taxpayers aren't subsidizing that.
For, just as a reminder to the board, the blue, and you may have said this early, I didn't catch it if you did, but the blue are what we consider either Houston-area colleges or our peer colleges. So our peer colleges include Austin, Tarrant, Dallas, Alamo in San Antonio. So we, we do these comparisons. The more realistic comparison for us is these larger colleges, like where does everybody else stand on this? So. So that's the blue. It's indicated in the, in the blue graph there.
Yeah, where the dark blue, light blue is those either peers or geographical location colleges that we want to more directly compare ourselves to. Red is the median and then the light gray is still all of the other community colleges. So we can still sort of see where we all stand. Here it shows our expenditures per full-time student equivalent. I think a few years ago, the board did go through a policy discussion about where do we want to be in terms of our expenditures. And there, the goal was set by the board that we want to be at about the median of expenditures per full-time student equivalent. So we had been lower on this chart. So we have moved up in rankings closer to the median, right? So we increased, we were the 17th lowest in FY '19 in terms of expenditures per student. We are now the 21st lowest, again, for expenditures per student. So that I hope helps give some context just in terms of, of our profile versus the other community colleges in the state. So to go to the proposed budget, as Dr. Head mentioned, I mean, our schedule is, is behind like it was last year for COVID. Typically, we have, right, sort of two points in time where we review with the board an outline of what we're thinking about for the proposed budget. It's typically February for a budget retreat. And then the June board meeting for the workshop. So this year, we are still doing both of these touchpoints early on and building the budget. It's just been delayed, right? So we did that retreat in May. And now this is where in these following slides, you'll see that I've added, we've added additional detail to this proposed budget. So this year just kind of shows the draft cover we're thinking about for the book this year.
Jennifer, may I interrupt you for just a second?
Of course.
Just want to make sure that Art Murillo is here. Is that, Art, are you here? I think I see your name. And then trustee Sullivan, trustee Maria and trustee Sullivan.
I'm here.
Have arrived.
Thank you.
Make sure that it's, it's noted. Thank you. Sorry, Jennifer, please go ahead.
No worries. Thank you. So getting into our proposed report, proposed budget. So for the assumptions, a lot of this are assumptions that we continue to use, remaining conservative on our revenues and expense estimates for that next year's FY '22 budget. We are assuming flat growth in credit hours and then 2% growth after that. Another assumption, our goal is continuing to maintain a AAA rating. And then our goal has been the 16 to 20% cash reserve. I know, you know, in the recent monthly financial reports, I have indicated that we are easily at or above 20%. But noting that a lot of that was strategically chosen to make sure we could make it through COVID, right, not knowing when or how that was going to go. So we are keeping that cash reserve healthy and you wanting that as a cushion as we still kind of navigate where enrollment trends and things like that will go from here. So continuing in sort of the assumptions that are used to build the, fill the FY '22 budget. So for tuition and fees, the board in March did approve an increase in out-of-district and out-of-state tuition. And part of that is, again, to keep up with, the tax revenues did increase in this budget. So to keep that parity with not subsidizing the out-of-district students, that increase is approved for spring of 2022. And then, and then, yeah, local taxes, I'll have more detail later on. We're estimating about 10 million in new revenues coming from property taxes. And then the state funding, this was the piece that was still uncertain when we did the border tree. I think we had just gotten some of the appropriation information then. We had thought it was going to be flat, but instead we did see an increase of 5% in state funding this year, which was great. Obviously, you know, and it was sort of a late in the planning game increase that really helped out where, what it was looking like for next year's budget. So then just looking at our sources of funds, right, local taxes, I showed you FY '20, the 50, 50 community college comparison showed us that the 42%, right? And that report is lagged, so we have the data on all colleges. But for us, you can see now that in this year's budget, FY '21, and then proposed next year's budget '22, that percentage share of taxes is increasing, right? This year, it's estimated to be at 45%. Next year, 46%. And a lot of that is a function of the fact that the local property tax base has continued to grow. And our, our credit hour growth has this year declined, next year assuming flat. So even though our goal had been to equalize taxes and student revenues, we are at the moment moving in the opposite direction of that with our tax base continuing to grow at a healthy rate. And of course, with COVID, the credit hour growth this year is down and we're assuming flat for next year. The state appropriation, right, this year, that's at 21%. And with that increase that we did get, it's going to stay at that 21% in the estimates for next year's budget. And with that increase that we did get, it's going to stay at that twenty one percent in in the estimates for next year's budget. So this shows the growth in the our tax base. If you look at that, the line shows the growth rate and the bar shows the actual values coming from each of the counties. Harris County is our largest at about seventy five percent, I have that noted. Share, and then Montgomery County and San Jacinto is a small piece of that. But you can see just from the percentages that we have continued even now into COVID, continue to have a very healthy growth rate in our local area tax base. So that, right? So that then kind of translates here into our tax revenues and our tax rate. So for next year's budget, the proposal would be to keep our tax rate flat at the ten point seven eight cents, which is where we have had that held the tax rate since two thousand seventeen. Right prior to that, we lowered the tax rate. So now the proposal is to continue to keep it there. And then this just shows the split between those tax revenues of what goes to our maintenance and operations budget versus what goes into the debt service budget. This shows the history of our tax rate that at the ten point seven eight cents, we continue to be and historically well below the state average. And then looking, so that's property tax revenues, looking at our student revenue, so our tuition and fees. You can see here, I mean, there was a bit of a dip back in two thousand sixteen, but otherwise, we have had healthy growth in our our credit hour growth, so that my good growth in our student revenues from tuition and fees, we had hit one hundred and twenty seven million in fiscal year twenty. Of course, this current year, you see the decline really from COVID. So right now, we are forecasting to end the year at one hundred and nineteen million in student revenues, really putting us back to where, about where we were two years ago. And so then
Let me add one thing here. In in recent formation we've had from the state and after we took a look at the state appropriations, thirty five out of the fifty community colleges actually lost enrollment, I mean, lost funding from the state. About forty six or forty seven of the colleges in the state actually lost enrollment. So for us kind of holding our own, I think over the year, it's been, I I think we've done, we've been in pretty good shape compared to everybody else. And I've said this before, I'm not so concerned about what everybody else is doing because I know what we can do. But if you just kind of put this in perspective, while we are relatively flat for the year, I think that we're in better shape than just about anybody in the state right now.
Yeah, so, um. So, yeah, and then, so, but then also then projecting, and I'd say that continues to hold true into our estimates for fiscal year twenty two. There, I mean, obviously, we we are hoping for growth, but for the budget, we are going to assume and propose flat credit hour growth in our student revenues. The reason you do see the increase here in the amount from one hundred and nineteen million to one hundred and twenty one is two pieces. One, right, the March board approval of the increase in out of district and out of state fees that would take effect spring of twenty twenty two. That would be go into this revenue source next year. And then also, right, discussions of allowing the student activity fee to be reinstated in the spring of twenty twenty two. So those, both of those fall under the student revenue category. So that's what comprises this increase into the FY twenty two budget, credit hour growth assumption is flat. So then moving on to the third largest of our revenue sources is is the state funds. So here, this is showing by biennium, it's not individual years, it's two years combined because that is how the state appropriates their funds. So you can see how we have increased, you know, over, we have increased over time. But you can also see, even though it's a smaller share of the total thing, the state has been shifting their focus away from the contact hour reimbursement funding to the student success metrics. That's within the red on the bar, the blue being the contact hour funding. So for this next biennium, for example, you can see our total did increase by five percent. But it's worth noting that the contact hour funding portion of it was is basically flat. Where we picked up the additional four point four million in state appropriations for the FY twenty two budget is in the student success metrics.
So Jennifer, let me add to the board, one of our, in the recent legislature, and this is an issue right now going forward for us, is we were in favor of the student metrics. So the legislature has set, I don't know, there's about twenty of these metrics that we helped develop back about ten years ago. So we're in favor of that. The issue that we had this time was, and the reason we don't belong to the association is because they were proposing a cut in the contact hour reimbursement, which we were opposed to. I I think that if you're taking money away from growth colleges, which is basically what would be happening, that's just fundamentally not fair. So we're open to some discussions and we're going to be involved in that over, as new funds come in, how do you deal with that? But taking money away from successful colleges was not the answer. So we locked the shift to student success metrics. And I, my own position on this is I'm testified over this is if you won't result, then set the, set the goals. And then if you don't meet them, you don't get extra money. Well, it's happening before. And the reason some of these schools are in problem because have issues is because they haven't made the change. In other words, there's new programs, there's new different ways, there's not a reliance on technology, for example, on some of them. We we have a, our financial model is based on three, at least three sound revenue sources. Then we've got other grants and federal government, which is a little different. But some of them just do not have good revenue models. And so the taking money away from us is not the answer to this. So we continue to promote the student points. And I think what you're going to see is maybe the funding holding steady, the contact hour amount holding steady, which is an overall reduction for us, but it'll be holding steady. And then you'll see more money coming into the student success point. So, for example, this time they've added more money for going forward, they're going to be adding more money for dual credit, which is perfect for us because I believe right now we're the largest community college in the, we have the largest enrollment among dual credit students, which is a really good thing for us. I mean, I think it's a good thing for students in the community. So we're in favor of those kinds of activities where they give you a point for that. And then same thing with transfers where they give you a point for that. So they add up all the points and then give you a percentage of that. So we're going to do very well in that, I think.
Dr. Ed Manjup, and this is Mike Sullivan.
Yes.
Since you mentioned the association, it might be a good time to spend a minute to let the trustees know if not being a member of the association had any negative impact on our legislative agenda. And
Yeah.
As we look back on it, you know, whether the decision was good or bad.
Yeah, I'd be glad to talk about that. Thank you for bringing that up. We, we, there were two colleges that withdrew from the association because of what I just got through talking about, because the original proposal would have cut us four or five million. And it's Collin County and Lone Star withdrew. And the two colleges that received the most money in the appropriations were Collin County and Lone Star. And so we've had, now we've had other colleges approaching us and, you know, we're not, we're not competing with the association. The issue, though, is the association does not, they don't represent our best interests. So it had no effect on us at all. We just had our own discussions and we have our own state reps and senators that we talked with and the community college, the coordinating board. So we have a lot of support there and I, we're going to be involved in future discussions over the formula. I mean, we're going to be involved in that. So to answer your question, it had zero effects. And I think we're going to have more people joining with us, not in competition with the association. It's just, this is what we think is important. So, thank you for bringing that up.
Sure, it's a good report, thank you very much.
Okay, so continuing on, that was sort of going through our three most significant revenue sources, right? Property taxes, student revenues, and then the state funded fund. So now to get into the recommended FY twenty two budget and sort of how the revenues and expenditures all fit together. Now we really get into showing some detail here. So first, this is the proposed revenue budget. So first, at the top gives you a comparison sort of from last year to this current year to the proposed twenty two budget. So you can see, for example, in FY twenty twenty, our actual revenues were about, were three hundred and eighty four million. In this current year, FY twenty one, remember, we budgeted very conservatively, again, just not know, just being conservative in general, but also not knowing what was going to happen with COVID. So we built a budget with with revenues of three hundred and seventy seven million. Right now, our forecast is three hundred and eighty four million. And right, the most significant change there is in the, well, it's in two places, student revenues, right? I've mentioned, we had, we had assumed this year we would see a ten percent decline in credit hours. Instead, we're at about a four, four and a half percent decline in credit hours. And then the state revenues, we had also assumed this year we would have a five percent reduction in state revenues. That also did not happen. So, right, I'm glad we built for all of the possibilities, but that way we can now have this three hundred and eighty four million dollar forecast for these current years revenue, which in total puts us about where we were in FY twenty, right? And but that is still something to manage because even though our revenues have stayed basically flat since FY twenty, we, of course, have had just naturally increasing costs that just seems to always happen. But now we do have, right, for the FY twenty two budget, we are proposing a revenue budget of four hundred million. And that's detailed in that bottom section, right? So this comes from, if you look at property taxes, I mentioned the ten million dollar new revenues from property taxes. And then also in student revenues, there's an eight million, a seven point eight, seven point nine million dollar increase there, right? But the majority of that, the five point three million being the the revenues that we got this year, that was above the budgeted amount. Otherwise, the actual new revenues is the two point five million and almost all of that comes from the idea of reinstating the student activity fee in spring of twenty twenty two. So we have that, and then, of course, state revenues there too. It's in total, it's an eight point two million dollar increase, but that is both the combination of this year, we cut, right, our state revenue budget by that five percent, by the four million, and the state did not make that reduction. So we have that four million, but then we have the additional four point three in the new appropriations for the biennium. So we're looking at twenty two point seven million in new revenues. And this is where I'm trying to show it is a combination of this current year's revenue budget being built on such a conservative basis, we can now build in the revenues that we did get this year that was above the budgeted amount, plus the actual new growth projected into FY twenty two. So this puts, again, the FY twenty two proposed revenue budget at four hundred million. I guess I just want to quickly stop there if there's any questions on the revenue side of the budget. So then flipping to the proposed expenditure budget, here, actually, now break it out into, we have separate funds, we have our operating fund, the student activity, that fee goes into its own separate fund. We also have a separate technology fund and then as well as our our auxiliary accounts. So you can see here, the total expenditure budget is proposed to be four hundred and one million. That number is actually towards the bottom right side. And but and you can see then the operating budget is about three hundred and seventy seven million of that total budget. So this is showing just sort of that separation between the different funds. But I do want to mention here, right, as you can see, the expenditure budget is above that revenue budget. So it is using an estimated use of reserves of about one point three million. Now here, this is what I'm going to say, working and building this budget months ago, that was a much larger number, but definitely with a lot of the positive revenue news coming in from property taxes in the state appropriations. I am happy to, I am happy, I don't like a use of reserves, certainly, but one point three million use of reserves, I personally feel is a manageable place, especially considering we have purposely strategically through the freeze on non-essential spending that we did, the hiring freeze that we did, all of that being intended to build up the reserves. So that way, we had that cushion to use the reserves as we kind of find what is the new balance in our revenues and expenditures.
Jennifer, can I ask the question?
Yes.
What is culture, could you explain that on the recommended budget changes? Could you go into more depth? Thank you, and partnerships?
Yes, absolutely. So let me get to a few slides later, we have detailed lists of what goes into each of these categories.
Okay.
Yes, and that is, this next section is our strategic alignment. So all of the new expenditures that is put in those different categories, right? These are strategic priorities. So when we, when we do new expenditures, we do put them into what are, which strategic priority does this go towards? So that's where you see thirty one percent going towards culture, forty three percent academic and workforce quality.
Jennifer, the short answer, we'll have more information about the culture, but the short answer of that is anything dealing with employees, basically. So that's just a category we put it in, so we'll, we'll have examples of them in two seconds.
Right, so, yeah, so here's where, right, that pie chart kind of shows what percentage by strategic priority. But this is where I'm trying to provide the detailed list of what goes into that. And so this is where you can see that culture, the nine point seven million, the majority of it is the compensation increase that we did discuss at the budget retreat.
We are, we are recommending a two percent across the board increase and then a two dollar increase for adjuncts. And the reason we're doing this now is if we don't do something, we're going to fall. So we would basically have the same pay scale that we had in nineteen, which means whenever we get ready to get back on and start hiring new people back on schedule and back to normal, then we're, we're going to have compression issues. In other words, our own employees would fall behind based on inflation, which is roughly about two percent a year. And I know it's a little higher right now, but to use the Fed's term is, we think it's transitory. And so we're looking at two percent, but that means that our own employees are going to fall behind. And so either we start trying to catch up right now, which is what we'd like to do, or sooner or later, we'll have to catch up. And that's what happened a couple of years ago, where we spent. Jennifer, how much was the total twelve or fifteen million in compensation compression issues that we addressed for faculty and staff, trying to catch everybody up to where where they should be according to the market? So we are recommending a two percent across the board compensation increase. So, and a two dollar, that that includes, who else in that category, Jennifer?
So for the two percent, it's both full time and part time, and then the two dollar is for the adjuncts. So between those three pieces, we would be hitting, I think, just about every one of our employee groups.
So We've addressed trustee Wilson's question, so the culture is our employees.
Yes, does that include, um, like custodians and stuff like that?
Absolutely.
That does, okay.
Yeah.
We actually have a
It'll be also part of the two percent, and then we also usually do a men of seven fifty, of seven hundred and fifty. So there's that floor.
Thank you, thank you for bringing that up because we're very sensitive to the lowest paid employees. So we have a floor and we take a look at that through HR, Maria Castillo's area, we'll take a very close look at that. And so when we put the floor on there, whether it be set, usually it's around seven fifty, we'll take a look at that and see, which is more than a two percent increase for a number of our employees. But we think that's fair, we we understand they they have to live too, like everybody else does. So we pay close attention to our lowest paid we pay close attention to our lowest paid employees.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the questions. I, I, that's a important part that we, I think for all of, all of us to be aware of.
Yes. And I believe you had also asked about the partnership. So that's where you see the community and business development. That is where they will do a lot of forums and sort of skill shops for small businesses to try to just provide just development opportunities for, for that area. So that's where you can see what that portion is for as well. And then just popping back up real quick to academic and workforce program quality, because that is our largest category, 13.3 million of funds going to that. The bulk of that being that towards our facilities and just keeping at the place where students come be in a really great shape. The repair and replacement budget, I had mentioned that I believe at the budget retreat, that was something in this current year's budget we had cut. And I, I really wanted it to be a one-time cut because I personally see that as something that's very tempting and easy to cut, right? Just like repairs on your home, but that just causes problems down the road. So I really wanted to get that restored. So that's 4.3 million. And then, of course, just new facilities and maintenance. During COVID, we really only had a brief, relatively brief pause in the construction of the projects that was in that 2014 bond program. So just from facilities that we've recently opened, Fallbrook, for example, and buildings that are getting ready to open, we have at Kingwood, the Health Professions Buildings at Montgomery, it's a student services building. So as those buildings open up, we need to make sure that in the operating budget, right, we have the funds to support those new buildings and just maintenance. Definitely want to make an effort this year is all as, as we want students to come back to go do a very thorough sort of system-wide power washing of our buildings and parking lots, just to make sure that the, the space and the environment that our students are in is a, you know, high-quality space for learning. So these, this is what we're, we're including in these categories. And then additional amounts here for financial responsibility and accountability. For example, insurance is one of those costs where it just sort of has to come off the top as that, those costs continue to increase. We've had large increases, I think, every single year since Harvey and our insurance costs. You also see here, the board approved it in June, this, the separation incentive plan. So there we have the first, the first payment. I'm sorry, that'll be actually be the second payment for the separation incentive plan. Also looking at the budget adjustment for Sci Fair, I had shared at the retreat, how we did the analysis of each campus's budget on a per-student basis. You're right, understanding that the campuses each do have their own character, so they're never going to be identical. But we also want to make sure they don't get too far, sort of out of whack between each other. So Sci Fair's budget per student has gotten quite low. So this is giving them a budget adjustment for that. So this goes through the total budget initiatives. We do also each year go through the budget and eliminate items in the budget that are no longer needed. Right? So the biggest one here that right now is no longer needed is in this year's budget, we had put in 5 million for a COVID contingency. Right? This, we were building this budget last summer. We had only gotten one of the now three stimulus acts. So we weren't sure what kind of funds we might need for COVID. I have now had to touch really very, very little this year of the COVID contingency because we have received now the CARES Act, CRISA, and ARP stimulus grants. That, that is now where our COVID expenses come out of. So in this, in our operating budget, we are able to eliminate that piece. But and you see here, kind of the first tranche of separation incentive plan savings. And again, just budget adjustments, like I said, we do make a point of each year going through the budget to see what items are no longer needed. So that's $12 million in budget reductions. So in total, we're at about 19 million in budget growth on the expenditure side.
Jennifer, I want to point out to the board, though, that again, we, we had many of these items in the 19 budget. And as COVID started, or the 20 budget, and as COVID started developing, we took them out of the budget. And some of this, we talked about at the retreat. Things, some, some of the, under the student services piece and the culture, or yeah, with student services and culture. So we're, we're trying to get back on a, on a normal path is what we're trying to do. And we feel like it's important that we start getting back to normal, things like the veteran, we talked about the veterans, for example, and talking about being consistent across the entire system, consistent across the entire system. And so what you're seeing is, again, us focused, I think, more on services for students in this budget. And that's, that's, if I had to say one thing, it's catching up. The compensation, I think, is really important. We don't want to be falling behind, I think, in repair and renovation because that, that issue, it's like your house. It probably does not go away. It's still there. If we need to repair the roof, we still need to repair the roof. So and the reason I think we're okay on the compensation, I don't, for a couple of reasons. One is we, any potential revenue losses that we have this year, if we do, I'm not counting on it, but we can still cover that from COVID. And I think that what you're going to see in a minute, coming up on one of the slides, is where we are with the reserves. So we're very healthy on the reserves. And so we normally don't want to be spending into the reserves, but when we have more than what we need, then we think we can supplement the budget. And then if, if things don't go the way we think they would be this year, number one, we've got the stimulus to fall back on, which I don't think we're going to need that very much to cover any losses. But we can also make adjustments for the next year. So if we give compensation increase this year, if the enrollments don't grow, we know what needs to be done to make sure that everyone stays employed. We go back to the freezes. We're, we're releasing the freezes or we're unfreezing everything. So we're letting people hire. But we have eliminated between, we eliminated over 100 jobs or about 100 jobs in the middle. I mean, I mean, eliminated them because the president and the vice chancellor didn't think they were necessary in the middle of COVID. And then we had the SIP where there's 140 people, 144 that took the SIP separation incentive plan. So we're conscientious about the number of employees and making sure that we monitor our enrollments. That's the key for us is monitoring the enrollment. So Jennifer, I'll turn it over to you for the reserve discussion.
Yeah. So you can see here in the reserves. I mean, back in 19, I think we were at 16 or 17%. And in FY 20, I think we had only budgeted to hit maybe 17% in our cash reserves. But as I mentioned, with COVID hitting, we immediately put in place the spending freeze on non-essential expenditures, and we put in place the hiring freeze. All of that really intending to purposely start sort of stockpiling into this cash reserve. That way we had that, not knowing, right, what was coming. And then even, even now, as we're about, you know, 15 months into COVID, there, there's still now making sure that at the end of the day, even especially once the stimulus funds are no longer available, making sure that our revenues and expenditures, that we have had the time we need to make operational adjustments so that our expenditures and revenues are aligned. So you can see where we had that buildup of the cash reserves. We ended 20 at 18.1%. We budgeted very conservatively for fiscal year 21, budgeting to end at 17.8%. But again, with, with a lot of those actions that we took, plus receiving the stimulus funds, that meant the actual financial impact of COVID on our operating budget was not what we thought it might be, means that we are currently forecasting this year to end at 21%. Right? With our goal being 20%. So we are definitely have that cushion to help out with the FY 22 budget. We are budgeting to end FY 22 at 19.8%.
Jennifer, just as a reminder to the board, when I became the chancellor in 2014, and then when trustee was the chair, we were at around 13% in the reserve. And we were approved by Standard and Poor's. And then we sold bonds with JP Morgan. They recommended that we get up to about 20% which at the time I, I thought that seemed to be excessive. I thought 16 normally would be okay. But after watching what happened with the hurricane, where we had 50, over $50 million in damage with the hurricane, and how we have to self-fund for a while until, and now we've, we've increased our insurance, but we still have to self-fund. And after watching what happened with COVID, I don't, I don't think you can plan on having stimulus money every time. So we know what's possible. So we think it's important that we maintain healthy reserves. But there is, there is a point where how much do you really need? Some colleges, I think we're in a good place where we have some flexibility. And that's really the goal is we want to be prepared. Even if a storm came in this year and we have massive losses like we did before. And I don't mean talking about necessarily about floods, the tornadoes that come off of all this. But right now, I think we would, with all of our insurances and everything, we think that we need to be holding, what Jennifer, around 8 to 10 million. If, if we had $50 million in damage, we would probably be responsible for 10 million, which is what the reserves would cover. So it's important to know, though, that each, each percentage point that you're seeing here roughly is 3.9 million right now, almost 4 million. Somewhere between 3.8 and 4, depending on what year you're talking about.
Yeah, right now where we've got our insurance up to, for example, is if, and I do want to knock on wood about there not being a major storm this year. But if, right, if there were to be, if it were to be, say, somewhat similar to the Harvey that was 15 million, we would probably get close to between 25 and 30 million off of insurance. So this is where it, this does give us that capacity to deal with that difference if we, if we needed to. Not looking for that to happen anytime soon.
I think the main thing is we have to take care of ourselves in these emergencies. We, we can't be looking for the state or the federal government or anybody else to come to our rescue for the, in the short term. It just doesn't work that way. Or the long term, actually.
And I will note too, that just in general, our overall cash position, right, this, these cash reserves, this is just one piece of our cash position. This is our long-term investment reserves. But our entirety of our cash position is what allowed us to be able to, for Harvey, be able to pay for all of that reconstruction and now wait on FEMA to do the reimbursement. So that cash position is what allowed us to, to carry that.
Jennifer, is it worth just reminding them what the fine, roughly what the fine balance is right now at any given time?
Oh, the actual cash balance? Our, our total cash balance is really around 200 million between everything. But of course, that's also right, the short-term operating funds. It's also bond proceeds that we have for the capital projects and, you know, everything. So a lot of that is committed to other things. And that's why these cash reserves, this is the uncommitted portion.
It's, it's, the college budget is, it's not exactly like your household budget on steroids, but it's, the concepts are the same. So we've got reserves like you would in savings. And then you've got cash flow that's coming in and out of your household. So that if we have to make adjustments, we can do that. Then we catch up. So, okay.
So this is really to conclude here, just walking through just now, sort of, like I said, it was a very super high-level outline that we talked through in May at the retreat. Here, wanting to share with you a bit more of a detailed outline of the budget that we are currently, of the draft budget that we're building. So then the next steps from here is, right, we're going to continue to take all of this detail that we've just shared with you and just flesh it out further, have all of the campuses, right, and the vice chancellor areas, everyone adds in their very detailed budgets into our budgeting module. And so then we would, on July 29, release to everybody a copy of the full budget report, right? It's about 100-page report that we provide. And, and that really is all, all of the detail at, right, at the department GL code level. So if that's provided to the board about a week ahead of time of the August board meeting, that's when the board would actually be asked to take an action on the proposed budget. We're also hoping in early August to receive certified values. This is the taxable values from Harris, Montgomery and San Jacinto counties. What we currently have is their preliminary estimates. So August is when we receive certified values. And so if the board considers the FY 22 budget in August, hopefully adopts that. Then comes September 1st, we have the adopted FY 22 budget. And then in September, we have its dates, its state prescribed procedures for the board proposing the tax rate. So there would need to be the, the board setting the tax rate and a public hearing. And then it's throughout the fall that the board sets the tax rate. But the, the budget that we would present to the board, right, in August, that's assuming a flat tax rate at the 10.78 cents. So this just kind of goes through what are the next steps, like I said, from today, wanting to share with everyone this additional detail to the outline of the proposed budget that we are building.
So that concludes our presentation. Do we have questions or? Again, we'll come back with more detail. So the next month, we spend, almost six weeks, we spend populating the budget and getting the final numbers. And again, for if you're new, we're running a little later than we normally would just because of everything that's happened. And I don't think with the, we may, with the special session, there could be some additional money in there from the legislature. But if we did anything, we probably would, well, we may know by late July, I don't know. Part of this, with the stimulus money, they're talking about redistributing workforce money to some of the community colleges. And I'll probably know that next week sometime. But we may come out with a budget adjustment if they do that. But I don't, I just don't know right now. So.
Chair Salda-Barn.
Yes, sir.
Mike Sullivan, Steve had asked for questions. Can I ask a couple of questions? Yes, ma'am. Chair, just asking your permission to ask a couple of questions.
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. Thanks. Steve and Jennifer, great job on the budget and the preparation. It's very similar to what I've seen last couple of years here on the board. And I applaud the conservative approach to the budget, especially early on, not knowing what we would be dealing with from either the states or the feds. And you've continued to provide services to our students. You've continued to provide employment to staff and faculty. You've maintained the facilities in first-class condition. You've helped retain and keep the high bond rating, ratings that we've had from the agencies. Things are looking good. And I for one appreciate it. Takes a lot of hard work. So thanks to Jennifer and her team. I, I think one, the only question I had was with respect to a comment about student service fees coming back in. I think Jennifer said the fall of 22. If I got that date wrong, could you kind of walk me through that? And what that mean, what that would look like compared to what student service fees are now? Thank you.
And so that would come back on in spring of 22, has been the thought. So for the student activity fee, it's $2 per credit hour. The, that fee did get waived. The board approved to waive that fee in spring of 20, we waived it spring, right, as soon as COVID hit, really, spring 2020, summer, fall. This current, this just, that we just finished, spring 21, and then continuing summer and fall of 21, that whole time period, the student activity fee still exists. It has not gone away. The board has just approved to waive that fee for this time period. So for September 22, it would be no action of the board would result in that student activity fee coming back in spring of 22. Now, what that does to the actual budget is we've actually already been able to restore that budget because of the stimulus funds allowing us to re, to reimburse for lost revenues. So because we are doing those waivers of the student activity fees, I mean, there in particular, we have very detailed backup of this is a $2 per credit hour that we would have charged, that we are instead waiving. So we are able to do a transfer from those grant funds to reimburse that. So we are able to do a transfer from those grant funds to reimburse that. So that has allowed us to restore that student activity fee budget.
Trustee Sullivan, so what happens, though, and the reason, so the original student activities, the that allows these student groups, we fund these student groups and these student activities with that. And we give the colleges an allocation based on the, their percentage of credit hours or contact credit hours. And, or not credit hours, that fee that's based on the credit hours. So what we are thinking is, if the students are going to come back in January, which is what we're expecting, and I mean, we're going to reopen everything in January, then we want to redistribute that money back. And so the colleges make the decisions over how that, how that money is being used with some, some guidelines from the system office. For example, there's a percentage amount that you can use for personnel. And they have committees on each campus that review all those budgets. What Jennifer was talking about, or what we had talked to you before, is eliminate the fee, a separate fee, and just put it into the cost. And then we would still allow the money. The money would still be going out. We'd have the same amount of money. We, we were trying to make a simpler fee statement. You know, we were trying to simplify all that. Anybody that, anybody in college knows that you get a statement of the tuition, and then all the fees might be lengthy. And we were trying to, to, to make it simpler for everybody to understand, so.
Right, I remember the previous explanation, and it made sense, and the board was supportive. So it's a good explanation. Thank you very much.
Any other further questions regarding the presentation?
Chair Saldivar, this is trustee Good. Thank you so much. I just want to encourage the rest of the trustees. If you have any questions at all, anything that's unclear to you, please reach out. Jennifer and her team will be very happy to answer your questions. But as the time approaches for the August board meeting, they will be running faster and faster and sleeping less and less. And so the sooner that you can submit your questions to them, the better able they are to respond to you in a timely manner and fully answer your questions. They really do want to help you understand everything in the budget. And with that, best of luck to all of you. Jennifer, Steve, everyone, you've done an outstanding job of bringing us through a very difficult time and with just amazing results. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I, I would like to tell you that, I, I'm just going to speak on behalf of Jennifer here. This is a very stressful time and has been for the staff. I talked with them yesterday, and keep in mind that we were preparing for the bond, the standard force review, and then the budget. So, yeah, the earlier you can let us know. Jennifer and I were talking this morning about having some special meetings if, if you have questions. But please let us know if you have issues because the, it's very intense in this month of July. So, and we will have a special report for you over COVID. I know a couple of you had asked about COVID expenditures. We separated that because we're treating that like a grant fund, and we don't put grant funds in the budget like that. And so we're going to come back to you with how COVID is being used. But again, I want to, I want to remind everybody that we have 210 million roughly. And we're required to spend 50% on students, but we're going to be up in the 75 or 80% category for students. So with the bulk of that money is going to students. And if we don't need it for operations, then it's going to go to students. So at every meeting I'm on, people are saying, well, I thought 50%. It is 50%, but we're going to tend to more than 50% because I, I think the way we've been running our business, we can cover the operations and, and keep that money going to students, because I think that's going to be really critical for their, for them and their families to stay in college, so.
Thank you, Dr. Head. Any further questions regarding the presentation?
I do. This is trustee Wilson. I know earlier you all were talking about marketing, getting more marketing, especially for North Houston. Could you tell me, what is the plan of action to get, to do that? And how soon are you trying to get that done? I know, Dr. Head, we spoke back in February, and I was mentioning more marketing for, you know, in my areas. But do you have a plan of action? And I will, I, um, would like to be a part of getting, getting involved in it so we can bonus as soon as possible. Thank you.
Yeah, it might, it might be easier if I just talk to you offline, but yes, we've been, we have meetings set up with, we've made some changes in marketing. And you're going to see more on radio, TV, and some of the things that you and I had talked about. So I've been dealing directly with Dr. Wright. I personally have been direct, dealing with him. So if you want to, I'll get back with you. We have meetings set up with each of the presidents next week to talk about their, where they are with their enrollments and what the specific issues are in their community. And he and I specifically, we're talking about what you, what you and I have been talking about. So if you want, I'll follow up with you personally and, and let you know exactly what we're doing, so.
Sure. Actually, if you could, let me be, let me be a part of that meeting. Um, so we can all be at one, at one time. So it's not like, you know, what, what we discuss, you know, so nothing is missed. I would appreciate it. Thank you.
I'll reach out to you soon because we've got meetings coming up with all the presidents and maybe as early as next week, and it can be on Zoom. I, I'll, I'll follow up with you today over there, so.
This is trustee Kane. Could we get a copy of today's report?
Sure. Yes, we'll get that out this afternoon if we can. You're talking about this presentation?
Yes.
Yeah. I'm looking at, I don't know, Jennifer, either, Desert Ray, we'll send it out through Desert Ray today.
Great, great report. Thank you.
Any further questions?
Yes, ma'am. Mike Sullivan, Chair.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Steve. As I said, you've done a great job with this presentation and the information. What can we, the trustees, do now to help? And by help, I mean, help you, help the system. What can we?
It would be helpful if you have questions. If, if you have questions about particular items, if you would let us know now, that would be helpful. We've got, we're trying to balance the stresses and strains of the office in there. And then I, I am, in fact, sensitive to people taking vacations and spending time with their families. So the earlier we get it, the more time we have to work on it. I, I think that's the main thing, is let us know if you have any questions. When you wait till the last second, then it, a lot of this is going to be prepared. And for example, if we wait until August to come into the meeting, then we have to go back and there's a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes. And that's what we get paid to do. I've got that. But, I mean, in my mind, we're all, we're all trying to work on the same goals here, which is the, we want to take care of our students and our employees and the community also. And I, and I realize you all are representing the community. So we want to make sure you're very, very clear. And if somebody's asking you a question, just let us know. Because we're trying to be as transparent and clear and open as we possibly can. So does that answer your question? I think.
It does, yes, sir.
And if anybody has any questions in the community, we're more than happy to talk with them. I mean, we are more than happy with you. I mean, if you want to set up the meeting, we'd be glad. And we've done that before, by the way, where but we don't raise, we haven't been raising the tax rates at all. So we keep, you know, it's usually friendly conversations, but I don't mind talking at all.
Right. Kind of a closing comment, if I may, on this, is that I'm, I'm just going off my, my two years on the board. And I know we have some other new board members as well. And even though some trustees have served a long time, we all still have questions. But it just, it's so hard when you've done the work that you've done to come to a board meeting and then to have to stop and address individual questions that could have been not only answered in advance, but maybe answered more thoroughly and properly. And then the ability to kind of do some back and forth as opposed to doing it at the, the public presentation. So just my comment, not thoroughly intended for anybody else. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Sullivan. Any further questions? If not, I just want to real briefly say thank you, Jennifer, and your team for the work that you have done and you are doing to keep us good, to keep our budget healthy. So thank you so much. I know it's a lot, a lot of work. And so I really, really appreciate you. Steve and your team, and your team, thank you so much. And thank you for being patient with us. And like I said, I just want to echo what my colleagues have mentioned. If there's anything that we can do to help you, just please let us know. Because at the end of the day, we just want to make sure that we all succeed. And so, and the college succeeds, which, you know, it is doing so. Thank you.
I would tell you, if I could just say one thing, there are no such thing as, what I, I'm just going to call them dumb questions. It's a very complicated budget. We're used to it, and we take some things for granted sometimes. So if you don't understand, don't, it doesn't, we're not sitting here. We want, we want to know. If you don't know, just tell us, because that's what we would like, is to sit down. We do that with our deans and our presidents and the vice chancellors and everybody else. We have sessions because our budget is so large that it, once you get beyond your immediate budget, it gets, it gets complicated in a hurry. But we're glad to talk to you about any piece of it, so.
Yes.
Okay.
So thank you, Jennifer. Thank you, Dr. Head and Linda. And good. Thank you so much for joining us today. You will be missed.
Thank you.
So it is, it is 11:21 or 11:22 AM. And if there's no further questions, I'll call this meeting adjourned.
Thank you.